Like to call the January twenty first, twenty twenty five Marshall City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Here.
Member Chaney Huggit. Member Gates.
Here.
Member Hackworth.
Here.
And Member Trayver.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I believe we have an invocation tonight. I apologize, I don't have the name. Oh, it's on the Reverend David Moran.
Reverend David Moran. With Christ Lutheran Church, pastor at Christ Lutheran Church out on West Drive. So it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. And I'm sure we're ready to get back to our warm houses, so. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for all the blessings you have given us. You are a loving, good, and gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you for making us in your image to exist in community with people of varied backgrounds, abilities, and beliefs. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place it is. But Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor, for we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbors as ourselves. We appeal to your son, Jesus the Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your word. Grant that our city would be known as a good and righteous city, a city of peace and hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes the stranger, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent and the marginalized from evil doers. Lord, thank you for civil government. I pray that our civil servants will acknowledge their calling and perform it faithfully. Grant that they would never neglect nor abuse their authority, but they would stand firm for truth and justice and keep them safe from harm as they serve our community. I pray for this council meeting tonight. May your Holy Spirit give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. Give the community members present understanding and goodwill to recognize we all are working together for a common good. May every decision be righteous in your sight, Heavenly Father, and for the benefit and glory of you and all your children. We ask this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Moran.
Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We'll now have our approval of our agenda. Item six is public comment on agenda items. Item seven is our consent agenda. We have city council meeting minutes from our session on January eleventh, as well as city bills. No presentations or recognitions. Informal items is our introduction of our twenty twenty five action plan. We have three public hearings tonight. Ten A is July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty one, capital improvement program adoption. Item ten B is one hundred page street slash five hundred industrial road existing brownfield plan termination. Ten C is one hundred page street, five hundred industrial road brownfield establishment. Noel Business. Twelve A is twenty fourteen building authority bonds, redemption authorization. Twelve B is RTAP reimbursement grant request. Twelve C is DART fiscal year twenty twenty six operational application to MDOT. Twelve D is construction contract for the athletic fields expansion slash Eaton Park. Twelve E is MDOT traffic calming project resolution of support. Twelve F is construction contract for Cosm-Hallington Avenue water main lining. Under thirteen appointments and elections, we have one appointment for the planning commission. Item fourteen is our public comment on non-agenda items. Fifteen is council manager communications. Sixteen is adjournment. Seek a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support? Motion support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move to item six, our public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per portion of, I'm sorry. For a maximum of three minutes, comments shall address agenda item topics only. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion. Item ten of the meeting agenda. Non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment, non-agenda items, item fourteen portion of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone that would wish to speak, wish to address council tonight on agenda items? Mr. Adams?
Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty two West Green Street. First off, object to the minutes again because you fail to include the substance of the public comment. That's not doing your job. That's misfeasance. But went to that MDOT open house last Thursday and couldn't help but walk away, as what happens with most of the stuff that's been going on lately in town. Couldn't help but walking away, just shaking my head, thinking that somehow what was being proposed is going to resolve anything in terms of being able to calm, calming traffic, which is an interesting use of terminology. But all you're doing is creating a bottleneck. It was interesting that the design only started at the west end of the fountain and then went over to the east side. But the western boundary ended at the fountain, not taking into consideration what will be happening along the rest of Michigan Avenue, going all the way back to Family Fair. You're going to be creating a bottleneck. At rush hour times, you've got people entering the circle from all four directions. It gets pretty busy. If you bottleneck the road right in the downtown area, down to two lanes with one center lane, all you're going to be doing is pushing it back up all the way back Michigan. And, you know, being at the fountain every Wednesday and Saturday for the past few years, I've had a good witness to what has actually been developing in terms of what feels to be, needed to be fixed. And actually, it's going to be creating more of a problem. You've already got backups during rush hour times of on the west end of the fountain, going all the way back to save a lot. The line of cars going all the way back to save a lot, all anxious to get into the circle so they can go to where they want to go. And lots of times, they aren't very calm by the time they enter the, enter the circle. So I don't know, you know, calling it traffic calming, or more accurately calling it a upsetting bottleneck.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Would anyone else wish to address council tonight on agenda items? Mr. Klinger?
Regis Klinger, three four eight Butler Court, Marshall. I just had a couple of things. I went to the downtown calming. I actually think it's a good start. It is going to create congestion, but it also is going to slow traffic down and prevent large trucks from going downtown. I think it's going to make it safer for people to try to cross the street, because if you try to cross the street now, you take your life in your hands. So I think it's a good start. I think it should be tried, and I, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. The other thing was the cap on, I mean, the ball fields improvements. I know there's like, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand left. I mean, with the money the city has from the sale of the Marshall House, I think they should be able to cover that. There've been a lot of donations from the public already, so I think the city can chip in a little bit more to get that paid for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Anyone else wishing to address council on agenda items? Seeing none, move on to number seven, the consent agenda. We have our meeting minutes from our regular session on January eleventh, twenty twenty five. There were city bills, purchases on one, three, twenty twenty five for two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And we have purchases on one, ten, twenty twenty five for one point five million, seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and one cent. And December power purchase is eight hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, for a total of two point six million, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and seven and thirty-three cents.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support? If motion support, it's a roll call vote, please.
Member Chaney Huggit.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Trayver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move on to item number nine. This is an informational item, I believe Mr. Perry is going to present this.
Yes, just briefly, as you recall, on January eleventh, city council approved the twenty twenty five action plan. This is just another opportunity to get it into the agenda and get it published on the website. We have sixty-nine goals, the projects, programs, and policies that we'll be working towards accomplishing this year. We'll place it on the website, and then we'll provide you an update at six months and twelve months. So it's kind of the plan going forward, but again, just wanted to get it in front of city council again, in case you had any final ads, edits, or questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? We did go over this pretty thoroughly at our, our January eleventh meeting, so again, thank you to you and the city staff. It's, I think it's a great list of goals and objectives for twenty twenty five. You know, some are pretty aspirational, but I have faith. So I will take a motion to receive the twenty twenty five action plan.
So moved.
Support?
Motion support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, or all opposed, same sign, excuse me. Motion passes. Moving on, item ten A, public hearing, July one, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty thirty one, capital improvement program adoption. And William Dop is presenting today.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Here, council has presented the capital improvement program, which is our guide for future capital improvements in the city of Marshall. It is a state required, by state legislation, required to do annually, and this is what we are doing today. The resources to provide the capital improvements are analyzed, and there's also a prioritization of that. I know it went to the Marshall City Planning Commission on January eighth, and one of the comments is not all of them had priorities. You'll see that I did update that, and that is in your packet. The proposed CIP is published to the city's website on the finance department's homepage. It was included in the council packet on December sixteenth. Like I said, it was through the Marshall City Planning Commission, they set a public hearing, and it went to their public hearing on January eighth. We also discussed it on January eleventh meeting, so sure, we've discussed it ad nauseam, but I'm happy to answer any questions tonight. I know there was comments about the master plan being worked on currently, and hopefully that'll be adopted in February. Like I said, we are required to do this annually. We do have an existing master plan that we looked at, and also we looked at the upcoming master plan and tried to incorporate those goals in it also. I won't go over any of the individual things. I think we've all had a chance to look at it, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, William. Any questions or comments on capital improvement plan? I know we've all seen this multiple times through different committees and through work sessions. So, yeah, as you commented, you know, the master plan and the CIP, or they do inspire each other, but they're not tied. And, you know, we will definitely, if we need to make modifications to this to, to meet a master plan need, we always have that option.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Thank you, William.
Thanks.
This is just a voice vote, so. Oh, my apologies. I forgot where we were. So I will open the public hearing on the July first through twenty twenty, July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty one, capital improvement program adoption. Anyone wishing to address council tonight on item ten A?
Barry Wayne Adams again, six twenty two West Green Street. Considering the existing turbulence as to what the long-term direction of the city might be. I don't know how you can really try to make some kind of accurate forecast as to what you're going to be doing for the next five or six years. Things are completely falling apart over at the mega site. Any of those associated capital improvements are still up for grabs. The completion of the water and sewer loop is involved in lots of contention in both the Marshall Township and Emmett Township. And with this new guy that got in yesterday and his immediate removal of the EV mandate, all of these factors militate towards a catastrophic collapse of what was intended, which is not necessarily a negative thing for the city. But, you know, we were telling you, telling you guys this all along, you know, it's and with this, you know, battery plant fire out in California. You probably need to do some serious rethinking as to the direction that you want to be bringing the city, because the potential environmental and public, public health and safety threats that could emanate from a large-scale lithium battery factory. And with the city being downwind from that, you really should be thinking about what's been done so far. I mean, there's going to be lots of contesting of what's been happening, and there's still lots of that, that still have to go, besides what's happening up in the Michigan Supreme Court right now. So again, got the opportunity to make things right, and right now, the way things have been going and looking globally, the direction the city is going is pretty much in a bus going off a cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address council on item ten A? Mr. Klinger?
Regis Klinger, three four eight Butler Court, Marshall. So the capital improvement plan is really not a plan. It's kind of a misnomer, it should be plan alternatives, because obviously, as I pointed out, you don't fund all those, so I put, that was my misunderstanding on that, but it's really more alternatives than a specific plan. And that plan, if it incorporated the master plan goals from twenty fifteen, that's way outdated and doesn't even apply today. I would encourage that the current master plan get adopted as soon as possible, and so you can modify this plan accordingly. Part of the master plan was further development of the mega site remaining land. Again, I'd like to hope that you include the people of Marshall in that future plans, have public meetings, have surveys, and go with what they want to do. We don't want another thousand acres of industrial. We would like something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klinger. Anyone else wishing to address council on item ten A? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? As I said, I know we've been over this a few times, so I would seek a motion regarding the capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Support?
How about we be a little more formal with that? Motion to approve July, the July one, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty thirty one, capital improvement plan as presented.
Excuse me, so moved.
Thank you.
And supported.
We are calling it now the program, it's not plan. To Regis's point as well, it's
Sorry.
Capital Improvement Program.
It's been, it's been a plan for a long
I know, I have, and I agree, it wasn't right, probably the right word used in the past, but.
Okay, we'll go onward. So I have a motion and support. It's a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We now have ten B, public hearing for one hundred page street slash five hundred industrial road existing brownfield plan termination, and Director Marcia Strange is here.
Good evening. What you have ahead in front of you is the termination for the existing brownfield plan. I know we talked about this at the last city council, well, city council meeting in beginning of January, a couple of meetings ago. So just as a reminder, this plan was established in two thousand and sixteen, but was not acted upon. And so in order for future brownfield plans, which is the next motion on the agenda to take place, this brownfield plan will need to be terminated. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing on item ten B, one hundred page street slash five hundred industrial road existing brownfield plan termination. Anyone wishing to address council tonight on item ten B? Mr. Adams?
Again, Barry Wayne Adams, again, six point two West Green Street. I guess what we're seeing here is the procedural equivalent of digging a hole and filling it back up. But I'm still not sure seeing the constitutional provision of Article nine, section eighteen, where government has any business interfering in or aiding or manipulating in any way the business activity of private businesses. And when you start to see something like that, you're seeing a merger, a business and government, and that by definition is corporate fascism. But I'm not sure if tooling up so we can make more beer is necessarily a good thing. I mean, you know, the police make a lot of money of all the beer that's being drunk. But, you know, when you compare it to controversy about the marijuana-growing facilities, which one of those actually is a positive towards the public health and safety? We have to have all kinds of anti-alcohol programs and, you know, all the actual tragedies that emanate from the production of alcohol and its popular consumption. You know, cars and bars just don't mix. You know, and you know, I'm, I'm not a prude about alcohol. I was a very vigorous drinker back in my day, but it's been a good forty-three years since I, since I took my last drink, and life got better after that. So alcohol, the consumption of alcohol, and you'll see that in other countries too, the prevalence of the consumption of alcohol is related to the level of relative unhappiness in people's individual lives. You like to drink a lot because you don't really like where you're at or what you're doing. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I do want to clarify, I didn't want to disrupt Mr. Adams' time, but this is a revocation of the brownfield, of brownfield plan that was approved some years ago for Dark Horse. So there's no Dark Horse facilities being expanded there. So does anyone else wish to address council tonight on item ten B? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from council? As I said, this is, this was a redevelopment plan that was put in place, I want to say twenty eighteen, twenty ninth, was it twenty sixteen? Okay. That obviously never happened, and we need to revoke it so we can consider a re, redevelopment of the property. So I would, is there a motion regarding item ten B?
I move that we approve the resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, a resolution to terminate the brownfield plan for Dark Horse Brewing Company redevelopment and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Support?
Thank you. Motion and support, this is a roll call vote, please.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Trayver.
Yeah.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggit.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to ten C, one hundred, this is the same property, one hundred page street slash five hundred industrial brownfield establishment, and Marcia will present this also. Please.
Thank you. So as Mayor Wolfersberger just said, this is for the same location, same address, since you have just terminated the original brownfield plan. Building better spaces, redevelopment, is seeking to establish a new brownfield plan in that same location. This was presented to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on November twenty first, and they recommended that the new plan be established, and it was also presented to city council at the early January meeting. All of the tax information was included in the packet, same as it was when it was first presented, and we are And we are seeking to establish this new brownfield plan. Do you have any questions for me?
Actually, we'll do the public hearing, then we'll have questions.
Okay.
Thank you. So I will open the public hearing, 10C for 100 Page Street slash 500 Industrial Road, Brownfield Establishment. Anyone wish to address counsel on item 10C?
Regis Klingler, 348 Butler Court, Marshall. I just wanted to say, I know this will include an environmental assessment. I hope that data gets distributed to the public so they know what's there and what's being removed and how it's being removed. I don't know if it's already been done, but if it hasn't, I think the people of Marshall should be privy to that information, just for the surrounding neighbors and the river's not that far away, just so we know what was there. Obviously, there's been some toxic chemicals and other things there. So I think the people of Marshall should have a say in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klingler. Anyone else wishing to address counsel on item 10C? Mr. Adams?
Barry Wayne Adams, 6.2 West Green Street again. I guess what I did not sufficiently contextualize in what I was trying to say was that it makes a difference what you make in life. If you make things that eventually will cause trouble, you probably shouldn't do that. But, you know, tooling up to make more beer, there's going to be consequences of that. And the consequences of the alcoholic cycle do not progress in a positive way. That's pretty much what I'm saying. And to tool up for that, I mean, to deactivate something that never got activated, trying to make sense out of that still. But then to essentially just do a new and improved version of the same thing that didn't get acted on, just can't help but wonder what are going to be the long-term consequences of that kind of activity? I mean, there's a lot of potential revenue. Yes, it's, you know, cha-ching, cha-ching. You know, people like to drink and they will spend lots of money in order to do it. But how you get your revenue makes a difference. And, you know, you know, what's going to be the next thing? Are we going to move into brothels? Or, I mean, we already got the casino, which operates as a financial cancer in the county. So, you know, what, what direction are we going? That's pretty much all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Anyone else wishing to address counsel tonight on item 10C? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are any questions or comments from counsel?
Can we just get clarification for the public what the plans are for the site? Please. Marcia, maybe? Reiterate it. I know we talked about it a few weeks ago, but like.
Yeah, so the Building Better Spaces Redevelopment Group is planning on doing personal storage units on that site. So basically, they are, you know, doing all of the soil mitigation and whatever Eagle is requiring of them. And then they're going to be building, you know, the metal storage units that they'll manage. And if I may, the comment about making available the information related to the site contaminants that is available in the packet that was presented. So if anyone is interested, they can, they can look at them.
Thank you.
Just following, following up on that. So is there, will there be a second, like a follow-up report that will be made public after the mitigation is complete?
I would. I would anticipate that Eagle will be tracking all of that because in order for them to get approval, their final approvals through Eagle, that would all be a part of the documentation process. I am not certain that the city gets a copy per se, but I can look into that and see what that process really entails. Yeah.
The only thing that I noticed is the proximity, and I know there's only a few houses right there, but, you know, some sort of a buffer for those houses and most of that whole street is industrial. However, there are that, that, there is that little pocket there, and I just want to make sure they're protected from any disruption of their lives.
So I do recall from this having come through Planning Commission and Tim Banfield being the chair of the Planning Commission at the time, there was quite a conversation about screening for the residences so that they are not directly exposed to, you know, the comings and goings of the, of the storage unit.
Yeah, it's, it's the aesthetics and, and things, and plus the comings and goings, but the aesthetics for their backyards and things. So, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Believe also in the packet, there's a rendering that kind of shows some of the trees in the buffer. It looks, looks pretty nice.
Any further discussion? I will look for a motion regarding item 10C.
Sure. I move we approve resolution 2502, a resolution supporting the adoption of a brownfield plan of Building Better Spaces LLC redevelopment and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Support.
Motion of support. We have a roll call vote, please.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving to item, and thank you, Marcia. Moving to item 12A, 2014 Building Authority Bonds Redemption Authorization. And Mr. Dot, please.
Good evening again. So in August of 2014, the Marshall Building Authority issued limited tax general obligation bonds for the construction of, or funding the construction of the Marshall Fire Department, the Marshall Regional Law Enforcement Center, and for improvements to City Hall, the removal of the fire department here and I guess, construction of the assessing, which was the assessing area at the end down there. Now it's the building department. That amount of the bonds were $5,325,000. As of April 1st of last year, those bonds have been callable, which means they're eligible for early redemption. Years ago, when we first looked at the Marshall House sale and what those proceeds could go towards, one that we had a work session and one of those goals was to pay off some long-term debt that might save the city money and also provide to free up a little money for the, the general fund on an annual basis. So we looked into that. Currently, there's approximately $3,790,000 still owed. If we were to pay that off early, it'll save the city over 1.15 million in interest charges over the lifetime of the bond. And not only that, it'll free, it'll free up about $350,000 a year in the general fund budget to make that available for, for other things that we find, I guess, necessary employees or projects. The Building Authority wanted to come to you, and I guess we talked about this at our December, or excuse me, January 11th meeting. It seemed like people were on board. We wanted to come to you and propose that to you in front of the council and, and get your blessing to sign that resolution and then pay off those bonds early.
Thank you, Wayne. Any comments or questions for Wayne?
I would just comment that during my time on council for the last six years or so, and under mayors Karen and Schwartz and now Wolfersberger, the city council and city staff have been moving toward greater and greater fiscal responsibility and kind of really getting the city's house in order more and more. And so I just appreciate everybody's work on that. I appreciate staff's work. And because of that, I think that the city is continuing to get into a better and better position, which will allow us to better serve residents in the future and continue making improvements for the city. So I'm certainly in favor and appreciative that we're in this position.
Any other comments or questions? I will echo Member Gates' sentiments. I think this is a smart use of the available funds, the savings of over a million dollars and the freeing up of significant money in our general fund. I think it's just, you know, again, a smart way to use these funds. So I would seek a motion regarding item 12A.
I move we authorize the Marshall Building Authority to proceed with the 2014 Building Authority Bonds Redemption and authorize city manager and clerk to sign the necessary documents.
I have a motion of support. Some voice votes. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 12B, RTAP reimbursement grant request, and Marcia's going to come back to us.
Good evening again. So this, what you have in front of you is related to the Rural Transit Assistance Program, which is what RTAP means. And what is happening is Dial-A-Ride and oh my goodness. Dial-A-Ride is still our service provider for the area. Okay. And so there is this assistance program that Dial-A-Ride is still, because they're under the city of Marshall currently. We need to apply for this grant because during this timeline, we are still managing transit for our area. This is a reimbursement program. It's, it's a grant to reimburse expenses related to their workshops and staffing for conferences and seminars and training of their staff. It's a, the amount is a $700 or $7,500 grant, and it would need to be used by September 30th of this year, which is the end of the state of Michigan fiscal year. Any questions?
Yes. What's the timeline for us to transition to the countywide authority and part two? Do we have any idea yet how many of those staff members are going to be making that tradition, that transition to becoming part of the authority?
I know that there are a lot of those details as far as staffing and transition are actively being sorted out. There's a lot of meetings going on as the TAC is being set up currently. So because of the offset in fiscal years, our fiscal year ends, you know, July 1st, right, or July, right? And then theirs doesn't start until October 1st. So there is this, you know, transition period and they're actually even now, right, trying to help them kind of shape the TAC, right? And help make that transition from kind of us fully to them fully. Did I answer your question? Ideally, it would be that they would have, you know, full control by October 1st is what they're targeting. And, you know, there is, you know, we're not exactly sure what it looks like between July 1st and October 1st. There might be some reimbursement happening as one entity has the capabilities of providing the service and the other, the other entity is still trying to get their feet on the ground. So those details are, we're all very much aware that that, we need to hash those things out. And I expect that once we have a better plan, you know, we would all keep you in the loop on, on what that looks like. But, but so there's kind of two, two deadlines there, right? There's the July 1st for our fiscal year, and then there's October 1st when they're targeting to be up and running. Those are the goals right now.
Got you.
Can you remind me what our responsibility with the TAC is versus, you know, versus having our Dial-A-Ride fiscal responsibility and then how much, what, what our overall responsibility is? If you don't know, I, I understand that too because you're newer. I, I know we talked about it several months ago, but I'm like, trying to blank.
Sure. So the Transportation Authority of Calhoun County is its own separate legal entity. And we, as the city of Marshall, make a recommendation to Calhoun County on who we would like to see be our representative on that TAC. And ultimately, it's, it's approved by the Calhoun County Commissioners, but they are by, by the articles of incorporation, they're supposed to essentially follow our recommendation. So that is how the city of Marshall has representation on the TAC. But for all intensive purposes, we have no, you know, part of the day-to-day operations of that operation, unlike what we currently do now.
It'd be very similar to how the dispatch authority is structured.
Correct.
So, you know, we, we have our presentation. We make our, you know, our position known and we vote accordingly, but it's, it's still not something we do day to day.
And my understanding is still that not all the municipalities or towns or whatever, it's Battle Creek, Marshall Albion are the, or maybe Springfield are the buy-ins.
Correct.
Of this currently.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I would seek a motion regarding item 12B.
I move that we approve the submission of a M.R.T.A.P. grant request in the amount of $7,500 and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary Rural Transit Assistance Program, third-party contract fiscal year 2025 addendum documents.
Support.
A motion of support. So a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 12C is a DART fiscal year 2025 operational application to M.DOT.
And you're back.
I am back. So this is another thing that we need to do because we are still managing DART currently under the city's umbrella. So there is a requirement to submit their fiscal year 2026 operation application to M.DOT in order to trigger 2026 funds. If it doesn't happen now, as with a lot of things, you know, you need to follow a certain timeline, even though we might not be managing the operations throughout the course of 2026, we need to, because we are the current managing entity, we need to provide support in them submitting this application.
Any questions or comments? Then I would seek a motion regarding item 12C.
I move that we approve resolution number 2025-03, a resolution of intent to apply for state formula operating assistance for fiscal year 2026 under Act 51 of the Public Acts of 1951, as amended and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
I have a motion.
Support.
I have a motion and support. This is a roll call, please.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. And on to item 12D, a construction contract for athletic fields expansion in Eaton Park. And you're back.
A familiar face this evening.
It's your last one.
So what you have in front of you, related to the construction contract for Athletic Fields Park Expansion, is we received, we received bids for this project on December 11th. We received a low bid from Freedom Construction in the amount of $2,121,325.80. We did, the documents were developed in a way so that we had some alternate pricing for some additional scope that we had hoped to be able to include, but because of the pricing that came in, we're not into, we're not going to be able to accept any of the alternate bids. Or the bids for the alternate scope. And so what we are recommending is that we proceed with a contract with Freedom Construction for the proposed work. The amount, again, like I said, because the bids were higher than what we had fundraised, we're going to continue to fundraise. However, we're asking for the project to be supported with funds allocated from the Special Projects Fund for the required contingency and maintenance fund. And if fundraising is successful, that would reduce the amount that we would pull from the Special Projects Fund. It's anticipated that construction would commence this spring and the courts would be ready the summer of 2026.
Any questions or comments?
Regarding the contractor Freedom Construction, where are they based of, out of, and have we used them for any other projects?
We have not used them for any other projects and my apologies, I'm working from memory on this. They are not local. But our we did, we looked into them. Actually, we had our consultant who helped out the documentation. Because we weren't familiar with them, we had her kind of look into them. They seem to be reputable and have, you know, she called around other municipalities that they had done work for. They, you know, they were able to give us, you know, their thoughts on it. And we were actually able to ask for a certain project manager that will be dedicated to our project. And because we know that these contractors, this is a new contractor maybe that we're working with, our staff has already discussed with our consultant just to make sure that we have, you know, appropriate oversight as far as that contract goes.
Does Byron Center sound right?
I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Have they, have they done a splash pad before specifically? Do we know? I just wonder, because it just seems like a lot of moving parts. It's the type of thing that if, heaven forbid, it were not done correctly, it would be like a very long headache, I would think.
I am not certain, but I know that they had a series of subcontractors that were, you know, specific to like the splash pad elements was, you know, they, that their subs were familiar to, you know, and even like QEI is one of the subs, right? A very local contractor. So our consultant that's helping us with the documentation, they were familiar with the subs. It just happened that they didn't know the, this main contractor very well.
Did we talk to any of the other cities or the municipalities that they worked? We talked with them, not just our consultant?
I, I did not, I did not in particular. No, I did not.
Okay.
No. We took our, we, we've worked with our consultants on quite a few of our projects in town. And so we took their recommendation.
I had one more question. Sorry. The the optional items that we decided were too expensive to include, what, what were those?
So there were two additional pickleball courts. So two additional pickleball courts, there was an addition, a stairway, a boardwalk stairway that was defined as an alternate. And some additional sight lighting that we didn't, that was called out separately. So all three of those were defined before the documentation went out for bid.
Six courts and not eight then? That.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
And as part, we do have a 10% contingency. So there may be an opportunity as the project proceeds and we, we don't encounter any issues that we may be able to reevaluate, maybe some of those alternatives. One of them was the court lighting, and that may be something we may want to revisit just again to get that constructed to.
So are you saying that's right now? There's no was that? Okay. And I know you said that we haven't spoken with any other municipalities that have used them. So we don't know like the longevity of some of the courts that they've put in, if they have lasted or anything like that, correct?
No, and, and if I may, I think that the installation of those courts is a, probably more of a material-based issue. That would be, I would be more concerned about the materiality of that court than I would be about the specific contractor rolling that on. There are standards set by the manufacturers for those installs. And so I would be most concerned about making sure that those standards are, are met. And that's where, again, our consultant provides construction administration oversight. And so they are helping to be responsible along with the contractor or the general contractor on site to help provide that oversight and provide punch lists associated with that work.
How about landscaping? Is that part of this bid?
I do not believe there was any landscaping that was considered to be an alternate. So if it was on the documents, it's included.
It's part of the base bid.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm very excited to see that this project may finally come to fruition, and I'm hoping that it can be construction and all the timeline is on that, but I could have asked that question a second ago. Hoping it can be done this, this year. I think it's a great use of our special projects fund to see this this fundraising effort whole. And then hopefully there's still yet another push to, to limit how much we do need to spend from our special projects fund, but I think it'll be a great asset for our community. So I'm very excited about the possibility of this coming to life.
Wait a second, that, I know that there's been a lot of talk over the last few years of getting something that's very nice, the public can, can use. And I think it's something I'm excited about that as well.
I do think this is again, a good use of Marshall House Funds to, you know, largely supplementing the maintenance fund and the, and the contingency. So you know, the fundraising efforts of the community were pretty spectacular in, in meeting the, the needs for this, for this project. We definitely want to make sure we, we do it right. No other comments or questions? I will seek a motion regarding item 12D.
I move that we approve a construction contract with Freedom Construction for Athletic Fields Expansion Eaton Park Project in the amount of $2,121,325.80 with a contingency of $212,132.56 and a maintenance fund allocation of $212,132.58 for a total funded amount of $2,545,590.96 and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Our support. Have a motion and support. It's a roll call vote, please.
Member Gates. Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Cheney Huggett.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 12E is the M dot Traffic Calming Project Resolution of Support. And Marguerite, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have before you a resolution of support for a project being proposed in our downtown on Michigan Ave. It is called the Marshall Traffic Calming Project, and it entails a very small amount of milling off of the existing road surface, surface and a conversion of the road from a two-lane road each direction to a single-lane road each direction with a single turn lane. The project is proposed between Sycamore Street and Liberty Street and is a goal, has been a goal, and well, I should say will result in calmer traffic. So reduction of speeds, reduction of noise in our downtown area, which has been a complaint that we have fielded as staff and I believe you as council members over the last several years. We do have representatives here tonight from M dot, our local representatives who have been great partners in this work. They brought this option to the city as a grant opportunity that they had. And as such, the, the project is 100% funded by M dot. So it does not require any local match, which is great. And we have done significant public engagement and communications on the project. So the DDA LDFA Board has looked at the project twice and voted to support the project pending the results of a public open house, which we had last Thursday, January 16th, at Public Services Building, which was attended by approximately 50 people. And the results were overall very positive on the project and the potential impacts it has for downtown in a good way. Oh, additionally, some staff, my fellow staff members and I presented this to the Marshall Manufacturers Association last week as well, and they were also very positive on the potential impacts. So tonight we are looking for your support of the resolution of Resolution Number 20, 2025, number six. And if you have any questions for me or our M dot friends, we're happy to answer them.
At first, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's put these sessions on. The, the the meet and greet last week was very helpful, and I was impressed with how many M dot employees were there and city employees were there to answer questions and found that very helpful. One question I did not ask then, and I just thought of now, well, anyway, I'm in support of it. I think the calming is absolutely necessary downtown. I'd see too much of cars racing around each other with the two lanes going the same direction. I think for safety reasons, for pedestrians walking to and from, it's going to be a great thing. But if, say, three years down the road, we say, decide like this isn't working, like this is, this is not what we thought it would be, what are the likelihood or opportunities to actually go back once with, once it's changed?
This is Dave Newbauer. He's with M dot Local Project Manager.
Thank you.
I agree with you. M dot runs a very well organized and attended open house. So we appreciate their support on that.
Good evening. So the changes we're making to downtown are very limited to the curb line. The only curb changes we're making are with the center, proposed center median island. So the existing bump outs, everything else that's out there is going to stay the same. So if in say, three years we come back and we determine, hey, this, this isn't working for downtown, we need to update it. It wouldn't be much for the state to come in and be able to remove the center median island and return back to the existing configuration. So in essence, what we're doing is we're basically putting a it's a pavement rejuvenator is away. Basically, it's a surface on it to protect the existing asphalt that's there, and we're repainting it. We could come back in, basically perform the same operation again, and then repaint it back to what it was before. So it's one of those, you know, if we were doing major curb changes, then that would be different, but we're just doing just that median island and that would be able to come back out. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I presented a concern that I had gotten from the public regarding large equipment that occasionally goes from the west side of town to the east side of town for farm, farming and things like that. And, and my concern is that center island and any signage that might be on that and how the, the comment that I got back is there might have to be a redirection of that equipment. And, and I just want to make sure that that is still being considered.
So one of the items that was actually brought up was the parades. And with the center island being there in the parades, and we've been, we'll be looking at an alternative to be able to have those signs removed. For the essence of a parade, you have a wider float that comes through. They may be a matter, especially if you have a combine goes through that has the head on it. They may need to work with the city just to remove that so they can come through and then put it back in. But we're looking at a removable option where it listens, it's a couple bolts, it comes out. The curb is only going to be the same as the sidewalk, about six inches, and the base of that may stick just a, for the sign support may stick just a couple more inches above that. So those signs will be removable as needed by the city.
Thank you for considering all that because it is a concern and, and I know that some of our farming friends from Marshall Township and Marengo and, and around are, are concerned. So thank you.
And those center medians, would they have landscaping as well or no?
No, we are going to just have it be concrete.
As someone who has been part of the downtown district for quite a few years, I have seen and heard the noise that happens on a daily basis from large equipment, from cars, from trailers, whatever it is. And so this is something I am definitely excited about. Anything that could slow traffic down in the downtown areas, bring down the noise level in the downtown area to me is a good thing. I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into this. But it is something that, that I think is, is very reasonable and very well put together. So I thank you for that.
Yeah, I would echo that. Thank you to our, our friends from M dot for working with us on this. I think it's going to be very, very important. I mean, our downtown is really the heart of our community and the word you hear is quaint about our downtown, but it's not quaint when a truck goes through at 40 miles per hour, you know, and you've got kids cowering on the sidewalk. And I personally, as a parent, I'm going to appreciate the buffer space that's going to be built in there. Cause if you know, when you're trying to put your kid in, in the car and, and, you know, cars are whizzing past, past you two feet away, it's a little bit harrowing. So I do think it's going to improve the atmosphere of our downtown and, and safety quite a bit. So I appreciate that. One question, you mentioned concrete. I do see the, the rendering here of the proposed mid-block crossing shows like brick or stamped concrete, any chance?
That's just an example.
Okay.
If you, if you look, it's actually, if you look in the background, it has palm trees in there. I don't think
I think we should get those too. I love, I like palm trees. Yeah.
No, the intent of that was just to show example of what it could look like. We're right now, we're just planning to use standard concrete. The, the quantity is so small.
Okay.
It's not a
We'll take it. Thank you.
Put more on that mid-block crossing. That's going to be a great addition to our town as well. I think we had it many, many moons ago. And it went away. Not sure when or how it ended up disappearing at one point, but it'd be nice to have that back.
Now, what will traffic look like coming around the fountain and going into the downtown district? Cause we are going from one lane around the fountain into two lanes as of right now. going into the downtown district? Cause we are going from one lane around the fountain into two lanes as of right now. Um, so now we'll be going from, you know, basically putting everybody down into one lane. What, ha, it, what does that look like?
So first, I want to preface that the downtown area is metered by the traffic circle and on the other end by the three-lane sections of the round. The traffic circle, there's one lane of traffic that can go in. Now, it's a free flow, but on this, on the other end of town, you have the same thing. You got one lane of traffic that comes in. So you've already metered on both sides by the existing geometry that's out there. We did go back and study, taking into account the additional traffic that's expected through town. Um, one of the things with a, with this type of lane conversion is um there's really not a huge travel, a travel delay for people going through. We looked at it, we studied it with the additional with, you know, I think a four percent growth, especially looking at just the standard, but also taking into account the, the Marshall um, the Ford plant coming in. The only thing we're expecting is a twelve-second additional delay of people traversing from one side of town to the other between the hours of four and five, which is the peak hour. Besides that, there is no additional expected delay to anybody coming through town. So the traffic volumes are well within our, our normal standards of when we would go from a, from a four-lane to a three-lane. The other thing I'll note, just from a, a safety perspective, it's, it's, safety is very important to us. The city did a great job at the, at the open house of presenting the items of the amount of crashes that are out there, and this is gonna be the type of crashes that we're seeing go away with the, with this conversion. One of the big ones out there is the rear ending and then the angle crashes. The rear ending goes away, like, I, I eat lunch downtown regularly, so I'll stop and turn onto Jefferson if I'm going that way to go to the parking. Well, you never know if somebody's gonna come up behind me or if they're gonna do that scoot around me. That goes away. I'll be able to turn into the, the left turn lane and then the traffic's just coming by me on that side. So we remove that type of, of, of crash. The other one is the angle crash where you get the T-bone. It's, it's a lot harder to get in and out of the side streets now. When we go to this, this configuration, it's gonna be, you know, you'd be able to see one lane of traffic. You're not looking for two cars, especially if you're turning right and you're looking left. You're not looking for two cars, you're only looking for one. So that was the other, the other big piece.
One comment I also heard was, what about parallel parking downtown? Now you were saying a decrease in rear-end accidents. With someone trying to pull in, parallel park? Now there's no way to go around that person who is trying to parallel park, correct? Cause there's not gonna be a space, right, to
They can utilize for a very short distance, the center turn lane to go around an obstruction.
Okay. Go ahead.
But to add, there is an additional space. Now you're taking the lane out. So now you, the parking's the same, and I can't remember what, how many feet that is that between the traveling lane and the parking spot, so you have an extra five feet in there, so it does give.
So from the edge of white line to the back of the curb where the parking is at is approximately fifteen and a half feet. The parking lane here has been for a while ten-foot. M Dot's actually standard for a parking lane is eight. So you've got fifteen and a half feet from the edge of the white line to the back of the curb to get in.
I'm just worried about a car insurance with seventeen-year-old daughter trying to park them. That's really, that's really what I'm worried.
There's nothing we can do.
So with that, how is that center turn lane marked then? Is it a yellow line? Is it a white line? How is that marked? Because I know that if you go over a yellow line, that can be a ticket.
It depends on where you're at within, in what block. The larger block, because of the median, is gonna have the double yellow, but in talking with the chief, there, people can go for a short distance over that yellow line to go around an obstruction that's in their way. Then in this case, the car backing up would be their obstruction. Um, in other parts, in other areas of the block, it'll be the typical dot solid with a dash yellow. Um, we're still working through the final details of what all the pavement markings are gonna look like, but um, the example I'll use is that Jefferson, if you're going um if you're going eastbound through town and you wanna turn north onto Jefferson, that should have a standard, you know, white line with a gap for the, the turn lane.
One more question from you. And I think that it's more people from, not in Marshall, but you'll see them pull out of the parking spot and do a big U-turn and head down the opposite direction on Michigan Avenue. Is there any consideration for signage, any? I, it's a huge prob- I, I mean, I think it's a huge problem. It's a safety issue, but I didn't know if we actually had an ordinance regarding that, but I, I do see it happening and I don't do it, but I, I do see it happening.
Currently signed, no U-turn. Um, and so
We do have signs?
I believe so. I think the, I thought the police chief talked about this, but I could, I could be wrong.
I was just gonna say, I think the Uniform Traffic Code um in a downtown business district, it's illegal to make a U-turn.
I would have thought so, and I don't do it, but I, I don't see any signs and I, and I believe it's more getting my nails done and I'm like, oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know how um this would change that at all, frankly. I mean, if they're gonna, if people wanna pull a U-turn when they're not supposed to, they're gonna do that, that's an enforcement.
It's just gonna make it more dangerous, in my opinion.
Maybe less dangerous.
Maybe less, cause there's separate two plus lanes of traffic.
Maybe, I don't know.
I know the chief had the same question, so I mean, I'll have to talk to him tomorrow. I can't remember.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
On the diagram, and this actually came up in a conversation I was having just recently. Um, the turning arrows that look like they're in the middle.
That's
They're kind of in the middle of the block. Are these, are those just kinda placed there for right now, like, obviously?
Yes, those are just a representation of what that lane is for. Um, it'll be signed to meet all of the MU TCD requirements.
Uh, we were just curious.
Hey, I'd say not signed, but painted.
Okay.
So.
Again, I, I also appreciate all the work. Uh, I know this has been, this has come up a few times in the past and um gotten shouted down. I, I I've said this a few times in the last few weeks. I, people have complained about the traffic in our downtown my entire life. And that's not hyperbole. So, um, I, I'll, I'll fully admit, I don't know if this is the right solution, but we're gonna try something.
I know there's a, I talked to a, a prominent downtown business owner that was very against this when it was brought up. Um, called it something different last time this came up, um, five or six years ago. He is now in support of it, so I, I think that says a lot as well, so.
What are the repercussions for the crews for something like this?
Nothing? I mean, they'll have to avoid the pedestrian island, but. I would think that would be important.
Yeah, I, I really, if you look at our special events when we do downtown Michigan Avenue closures, I think maybe some minor modifications, but it really should not have a large impact on those downtown events.
Yeah, the Blues Fest and whatnot, I don't, there's no impact on that, you know? Some people.
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-six, Resolution of Support for the Marshall Traffic Calming Project and authorize city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
And I support that.
I have a motion and support, and this is a roll call vote, please.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Let me hug it.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, to item twelve F, construction contract Cosmetology and Cosmopolitan Avenue Water Main Lining. Marguerite?
Hello? Um, this uh report is in regards to work um proposed for Cosmopolitan Avenue. Uh, you may recall that during our budgeting process for this current fiscal year, um, we maintained funds in the water department's capital um budget line for uh work on Cosmopolitan Avenue to improve water quality in that area. Uh, the existing water main is cast iron. It's from the nineteen fifties and um it is uh made at a time when cast iron quality wasn't that great. And it also, it, it, so it's, it degrades on the inside and um when uh the water gets to residents, um, it has flex, you know, material from the pipe that get into appliances and faucet screens and cause um, you know, challenges for local uh water users. So we are working on a, a project to improve the water quality in this area. Uh, Cosmopolitan is a dead end, um, but the water main loops um through um to Madison Street um at the end of Cosmopolitan. And we're specifically talking about that section today. There's a graphic in the report of where the proposed water main lining is, and that's what we're we are approving tonight is water main lining for a six-inch cast iron pipe between Cosmopolitan and North Madison Streets. Uh, North Madison Street, uh, we issued bids for this work um at the end of the year and we received um one on July ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the single bidder was Furpile Construction USA in the amount of a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, as I um alluded to, this is the first part of work that we're looking to do on Cosmopolitan Avenue. The other component will be a water main replacement within the right-of-way of the existing street. And um we think both of those projects together will improve the water quality for our residents and give us a more resilient water main for years to come. Tonight I'm looking for approval for the construction contract um uh with uh Furpile Construction USA. Um, and the amount that they bid, including um contingency of one thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars for a total project funded amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We currently have five hundred thousand dollars in our capital uh budget for this fiscal year, for this total project.
Question for you, Marguerite. Um, so this will be done in the right of way. Is that this, in the yard? Is that in the street? Will there be any street repaving sidewalks or anything like that?
So um the water main lining is specifically for about three hundred and forty-five, forty, three hundred and fifty-ish uh feet of water main that runs, it's, it's, it's called, we, we would call it like a crosslot water main. It does not run in the street. It is in an easement. So it currently goes through yards, under a shed, and very close to on a uh property, a house. Um, and we are proposing to line this water main because replacement of the water main would be very expensive because of those reasons. We'd have to relocate in an area in tight spaces, um, and that would be costly to construct. So we are proposing to line that section of water main um at this point. And then we will replace the water main that is in the right-of-way, so that's under the curb line. And we will come, come back to council with that project once we have all the details figured out on that. But that's, that's going to be replaced again within the right-of-way. Um, but this is specifically just for lining, so it is a um a way to rehab water main without excavating it. So they drain the water main, they put a um, a liner material um in the water main, they fill it with uh like a cement, like a grout-type material, and they basically fill the interior of the pipe with a new lining, which coats the interior of the pipe, removing all that degraded cast iron material and preventing it from breaking free in the water and allowing the water to continue to flow smoothly through the pipe and stay clean.
What's longevity of the line?
I'm sorry?
What is longevity of the line?
Um, uh, water main lining extends the, the useful life of water main about fifty years. New pipe is constructed and we, we do a useful life uh estimate of that about ninety years.
So are you looking at a two, two-pronged process?
Correct.
And what's the impact to these residents to have this done? And then, I don't know, whenever you're having the rest of it done, I, what's the process with that?
So water main lining is relatively low impact, and that's why it's a, it's a valued method of rehab, rehab, because you can re- repair rehab pipe that is in areas that's very hard to repair or would cause a really big impact if you had to excavate. So the process for the lining um would be, if you see the line, the graphic, the water main lining component is the east-to-west line. Um, there would be a pit at North Madison, so a hole dug in the ground at North Madison and a hole dug in the ground at the end of the cul-de-sac out of the way of drivers, but within the right-of-way or our, our existing utility easement. When those pits are, are dug, then all the work is performed on that water main from each of those locations. There's no excavation in between those two pits, um, because they're doing all the work from the inside of the pipe. Our, our goal is um to have this done um in April. So this would be the first phase of work that's done. Um, once this is contracted, um, and um, right now, actually, we're working to authorize engineering plans for the replacement component of the water main, which is the line in the graphic that's running north-south. The, this is a relatively small project for replacement and um we expect to have the design done and bid the work in March for um you know, June-July construction timeframe, so that is gonna be the more impactful um component of construction for residents, because it's gonna impact um their access, access on the road or they will have access, but the road will be torn up. And then I think to answer your question, we are, we will be evaluating um when we do the water main replacement, there will be a component of road improvements that are done, whether it's the full road um or half the road, we are still working through what that looks like from a funding standpoint.
This won't affect the church at the end of Cosmopolitan as far as people being able to get in and out of that parking lot at all, correct?
No, we will maintain access to the parking lot. Um, actually, the church is the only water service um along the component of water main that's being lined that we will um have to provide temporary water service to, so um, and we already have a plan on how to do that.
Seeing no other comments or questions, I will seek a motion regarding item twelve F. Margaret? Support. Motion and support, and it's a roll call vote, please.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Mayor Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Member Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Hackworth.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, item thirteen A is an item I'm bringing to council for uh the appointment of Carl Seabertson uh to the Planning Commission. Um, Carl received an enthusiastic uh recommendation from the board chair of the Planning Commission, as well as another member. Uh, his credentials are pretty impressive, having been the vice president of engineering uh with a previous background in mechanical engineering, I'm sorry, vice president of engineering for Eden Corp um and doing global uh construction and expansion projects, so uh I think his experience will bring um uh very, very uh, uh very valuable resource to the Planning Commission, so. Um, my recommendation is to approve the appointment of Carl Seabertson to the Planning Commission for a term ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. So move.
Support.
Motion and support, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. It brings us to item fourteen on the agenda, which is our public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Uh, comments uh will be limited to two minutes and comments should address non-agenda items and should not address uh the items that were heard during the public hearings. Uh, does anyone wish to address council tonight on non-agenda items? Uh, does anyone wish to address council tonight on non-agenda items?
Regis Kullner, three, four, eight Butler Court Marshal. I did find the environmental assessment for that parcel on uh, industrial page. There's some pretty nasty stuff in there, and the soil was arsenic, selenium, and mercury exceeding the guidelines, and also the groundwater was lead and like chloroethylene, which is quite toxic. The concern I have is that that is fairly close to the river. That groundwater will go towards the river. I believe there should be some testing done at, close to the river to see if that has flowed that way. This is another good example, having an environmental planner, environmental person on staff that could coordinate something like that. I hope we take that into account and be proactive instead of reactive of those chemicals getting into the river. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kullner. Anyone else wishing to address council tonight on non-agenda items? Mr. Adams?
Barry Wayne Adams again, six point two West Green Street. Uh, just so that you have a accurate understanding of what happens with the traffic at rush hour coming in from Michigan. It'll back up and, and you know, we're there from three-thirty to five-thirty. At least ten times during that period, it will back up as far as Marathon. And when it starts getting that far back, it spills over to Green and Hanover and Mansion. So that's probably going to be what the real dynamic of the traffic calming is going to be. Uh, and even though it may slow down traffic downtown, it's gonna create more traffic in the residential surrounding areas. All right. I had a copy of the memorandum that was sent to the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners from Dr. Remington Nevin, Medical Director, St. Clair County Health Department. The subject was public health risks of industrial solar plants and data centers. This is November twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and he says, uh, at the November seventh, Environmental Public Works Committee meeting in St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, public concerns were raised regarding potential health re- risks posed by the proposed construction and operation of certain industrial solar plants and data centers in St. Clair County. The county administrator subsequently asked the St. Clair County Health Department to investigate these concerns, and he went ahead and did that. Uh, and he comes back and says in his professional medical, medical opinion that these solar plants and data centers constitute a potential public health risk to the residents of St. Clair County and are therefore subject to po- local public health oversight and action. So I'm asking you guys to make the same request of the medical director in this county to investigate the toxic effects of the battery plants.
Okay, Mr. Adams, anyone else wishing to adjust, address council on non-agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we will move to item fifteen, which is council and manager communications. Member Gates?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate what I've said before about the um, Marshall Athletic Fields. I just wanna make sure that we are all um, thinking about the area around the park development for reasons of um, improving appearance, safety. And um, yeah, just the well-being of anybody trying to get to and from that, that new space that we'll be developing. I still think it's imperative that we add sidewalks in front of the um, athletic fields on Michigan Avenue and, and making crossing of Michigan Avenue safer in that area. There's a lot of apartments on the other side that may have um, pedestrian traffic coming over now to the new splash pad, so. That may be something for MDOT um, folks to take back to their teams as they uh, think about future projects, but then uh, my second comment is just again, to thank the MDOT team for um, being so involved and being available for questions um, and explaining their process downtown. We do have a lot to thank them for, as we do not have to pay for those improvements in our, our roads on Michigan Avenue, which would be a large expense, so. Um, I don't think they get as much credit sometimes, or uh, um, pats on the back as maybe they, they should or, or wa- wish they could, so I wanna thank them for all they do for Marshall.
Mr. Shane Haven?
Yeah, I'll piggyback on Ryan, because I do appreciate MDOT for listening to us. Um, I had some really great conversations during the open house. Uh, I also am concerned about what's going on with the splash pad and having a cohesive safe environment for people to travel in and out of that area. And we're gonna have kids and, and everything, and I agree with you with that too. Um, the only other thing that's been brought up to me several times is um, the traffic signals out um, at the highway, at, at the exits, uh, at eleven o'clock and three o'clock in the morning where they're still, you know, set for daytime traffic and um, people are waiting a long time even at, at uh, West Drive and trying to get to and from their employment and being a- and stopped. Um, so just, just an idea to look into for those new traffic signals and then West Drive maybe at uh, the off-hours of traffic. And I appreciate you very much for listening to us. Thank you.
Dame Andrew Beer?
Thank you. Uh, the only item I wanna bring up is on February sixth, we will have our next master plan open house. So I wanna try to get that advertised as much as possible. We'll be putting out a flyer, but the doors open at five-thirty. We'll hold it here at City Hall in the training room. At six P M, there will be a presentation piece. Uh, and then also they'll have some um, basically interactive input sessions from six-thirty to eight, so. Again, get that on everyone's calendar. City Hall Training Room, February sixth, Master Plan Open House.
City clerk?
I am all set tonight, thank you.
Michelle? Um, I do have a few things. Um, again, my thanks to MDOT, the open house was uh, very informative. Thanks to city staff as well, the um, having the presence there was great, the um, information on, on traffic accidents, um, eighty-three traffic accidents in five years in that downtown stretch was, was more than I thought had happened, so. That was very helpful. Um, I did have my first meeting uh, as a member of the Cowon County uh, Consolidated Dispatch Authority and uh, got to tour the nine-one-one center. Really impressed with that operation, the uh, uh, improvements they've made in, in um, integration in the last couple of years, just um, uh, can't, can't say enough about, um, it's really a, a top-class, top-notch operation. Um, that uh, I think if we were still running individual centers would, well, I don't have to think, we, we would, no way we could have uh, an integrated system like that, uh, just be cost prohibitive, so. Uh, I'll also note, uh, Oaklawn held their first event to kick off their one-hundredth anniversary year to, this year, and they're gonna have a series of events throughout the year, and I encourage everyone to attend. Uh, I think the next one that's kinda sorta in the hundredth year is the uh, open house they're having, um, what is it, first week of February for the uh, new pharmacy? Yep. Um, and so look for those events, please, and, and attend them. The uh, Oaklawn is a, it's a valuable part of our community. I think with that, I will seek a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion to support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign, we are adjourned.